Good evening, I'd like to call this to order for the planning committee at 6 o'clock.
I'll call the rule. Chairman Wykoff? Commissioner Gavahy?
Available.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Nobbo?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marr?
Here.
Commissioner LeRue? Absent.
So if we have any public comment, this would be the time to do so. With no public comment, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve last one's minutes.
I'll second.
I'll call the rule. Commissioner Gavahy?
Yes.
Mr. Nobbo?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
They're approved unanimously.
Okay, now we'll move on to old business, potential fence code amendments.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Joe, I'm a planner with the city. Been with the city a couple of months short of a year. And one of my main duties is reviewing permit applications and planning and zoning. And that includes a lot of fence permit applications. And in my time working with the city, I've noticed it causes a lot, our current fence code causes a lot of frustration for a little way. Okay, gotcha. So the fence things. The fence code causes some frustration for some contractors, homeowners, and applicants for a few different reasons. It's a little inconsistent, not everything regarding the fence code is all in that section, some of it's spread out in other sections. So today I'd like to walk everyone through a few of our proposed changes. And we brought this to the BOC, last BOC workshop, and now we're bringing it here today. So first, the fence code has a definition section, and there's a definition for the building line, but that definition is not utilized at all in the current fence code. And that's important when it comes down to height, which I'll talk about a little bit later. But basically, this would just add a little bit to that definition to include variances as part of the building line. And then on to number two on the bottom of that same page, building permits required. Or we just want to clarify that temporary construction fencing would not need a separate fence permit application. And also more on that later gets touched on. Onto the next page. Here we split up the openings and open fences into two separate sections. This is a big part because a lot of fence manufacturers don't make fences that meet specifically the, are open fence requirements, they're kind of very specific. So with this data here, I put some of it on the slide, I put where I got a lot of this information, some of the research we did. But I looked at some of the other municipalities' open fence requirements. I also looked at some of the open fence types at common manufacturers like Home Depot and Lowe's, and kind of broadened the requirements for open fences. That's what's going on there. Then back to the temporary construction fencing, just adding a little section here that it's required, but, and then some of the feedback we got from the BOC meeting was that we should really be requiring some more on the temporary fencing. So I talked to the rest of my department about that. And we're gonna be implementing some stronger and more specific construction fencing requirements.
I was just gonna jump in here really quickly, just to touch on that a little bit. So in chapter 14, which is really like the building regulations and technical amendments of the code, we do have a section that's construction fencing. And so you'll be seeing this in a few, hopefully sooner than later, a month or two months. We, Marcy and I were talking with FDEM about updating our floodplain regulations, is something that's required. So that's looking at chapter 14, looking at chapter 14's the building code and technical amendments. Chapter 94, which is a floodplain chapter, and then also adding some definitions or moving some definitions into our chapter 82 of the code. So you'll see, Marcy and I were going through that, and also talked to Joe about the silt fence, the sediment fencing. And I think that that chapter 14, it talks about construction fencing, so looking at that section would be a great place to put the silt fence, and then making that area more robust. So you will be seeing that, not in this, the fence code, but you'll be seeing that in a month or two months, a draft of those ordinances.
Well, is that gonna be redundant then to number 10 with the temporary fencing?
No, it won't. The temporary fencing and, or the construction fencing in chapter 14 talks a little bit more about where it is, when is it required, this is just a definition, so it won't be in conflict of both, and we'll make sure of that.
Well, would it be simpler to have it in one place? I mean, rather than somebody looking at fencing and seeing temporary fencing and think that's gonna be fine, you know, so like, having it in two places makes sense, kind of, but to somebody trying to do, you know, new construction or something, and then they go into fencing and they see the fencing here, or should there be something maybe added to see paragraph
Yeah, we could definitely make sure, and that's the one thing we didn't want to do with the temporary fencing, is we do feel like, as we use our code, we realize it's been touched here, and then when somebody started to touch it, they said, oh, let's go ahead and add this here while we're doing it. Consequently, it's grown into confusion. So what our code is missing, honestly, is a construction site management and maintenance section, and that's really where we want to capture all this. But for now, we really do want to touch on the silt fencing, but we're going to do that, as Jenny said, as we get into the 14-38, which right now is, 14-38 is required construction fencing. We're gonna reword that to required construction and erosion control fencing, and that'll be a good place to include that. So what we may do is if we do ultimately just at least define it here, then we may kick you back to another location for further information, however we need to word that. But we would definitely want to have the rules and regulations clear and concise in one location, but we may have it defined once or twice in our code, so that people are seeing it and knowing to go look for it somewhere else to get the better, more defined use of it and stuff like that.
Okay, yeah, because we're, it seems as if we're getting into quite a bit of construction now. And then especially, there was the main issues with the condo over by Tom and Kitty, that, you know, was there construction fencing enough to keep all the sand from going on the road?
Correct, and I think I have seen really good examples of construction site management sections that are very specific to job site trailers, construction fencing, erosion control, discharge during de-watering, curb maintenance, you know, soil tracking on and off the site. So I really would like to capture that, so I'm kind of excited, but Jenny and I have been looking forward to that in the next few months as well. But first will be the floodplain, and then we'll kind of work on that section, but we would look to capture that and really bring it home for us.
And wouldn't any fencing, silt fence in particular, fall under OSHA guidelines as well, which it's clearly stated, they're gonna have to follow the OSHA rules. I know it's good to have it in ours as well. And as long as it's consistent and it's in different places, I don't think that's any kind of problem. It just has to be consistent, so they don't point at one, say, oh, over here it says this, and over here it says that.
So, and with the silt fencing typically, that's controlled through like FDIP and through the stormwater management, so they have particular rules around erosion control and best management practices. So we'll revert to that, FDOT has a good standard, but we're also looking to, we'll probably create a design standard specific to Madeira Beach that we will ask, and it's a normal part of plans, if you're doing work in Pinellas County, you insert Pinellas County standard, if you're in Clearwater, you insert that. We would like to create one for Madeira Beach that's consistent with what's used, but also gives us the ability when driving around the city limits to be able to stop and go, hey, you're not doing this per our standard that we've given you and permitted by, you gotta get it fixed and corrected and things like that. So ours will be very similar to ones that are commonly used. We may make it a slightly bit more robust, because, you know, if you have stakes that are closer together, you're gonna have a more stable silt fence. A lot of times, you only have to be six to 10 feet apart with your stakes. So we may come up with something like that to help with the silt fencing and keep it a little more intact during construction process.
And then where it's red is, these are the changes you want to add, is that correct?
Yeah, these are the additions. So here, I don't mean to cut you off, but the point of touching the silt fencing here or temporary fencing was more just to let people know that it doesn't have to apply to the regular fencing code section. So I think it was a good idea to maybe, in that red that we're adding, maybe add a reference to that section 14-38, the required construction fencing.
Well, I was just gonna say, be, working for a contractor and having to deal with this from time under number 10, where you have temporary fencing, shall be removed within two calendar days, that's pretty tight. That could be two, you know, maybe five working days because of rain or whatnot. So I think you're just opening a, you're causing a problem there just by two days, because sometimes these guys moving equipment, doing this and that, it's hard to get. Yeah, two weeks would be plenty of time.
Sounds good.
And then if you want some reference, the Corps of Engineers handbook, EM 385-1-1, has all that spelled out, it's like this thick. And anything you want to deal with construction and do it safely and above and beyond the OSHA rules, you could take a look at that, and it'll spell out exactly what we need for the beach construction.
Marcy, is there any reason in your specs that you've left out bales of hay?
Bale hay?
Hay bales.
Hay bales.
Yeah, so that would typically, that would be in our stormwater runoff, and that would be considered part of a best management practice, kind of a BMP train. There's no reason why when we do our construction site management section as related to erosion control and stormwater, that we can send people to a standard that includes hay bales as an option, but it is, it is used. We just went and touched it for our fence section here.
The thing is, it's, my experience with silt fences and hay bales, they go hand in hand. And I've never been on a job site that just one has been used. For the simple reason is silt fence doesn't catch everything. Where you lay a bale of hay, and that bale gets wet, it absorbs a lot of stuff.
It does, and those would be like great options at the grades, especially for the projects we have where the construction's going on immediately adjacent to that. So there's nothing wrong with us, in addition to our silt fencing location requirements, also requiring the hay bales. We're also getting much better about requiring or asking people to show us on-site where they're gonna have some, you know, soil tracking, such that the dirt comes off the trucks prior to hitting the road, we're trying to get more aggressive about that as well.
I think that should be added in.
And we'll definitely, you won't see it in the fencing, but we'll definitely get that, get that in the appropriate section, if that makes.
Thank you.
All right, so continuing down in the fence section. On the next page, the item number five in red that we're looking to add in, this is already a section of our code. Here we did reference it directly, but this just lists areas where a fence is not permitted. And this just brings it into the fence code, so that people, when they're looking to build a fence, everything's right in the fence section. That's just the intersection visibility triangle, which already exists in our code, we're just adding it here, so everything's in the same spot for people. Next is going to the height, this is another big point for a lot of fence permit applicants. Right now, we don't have a clear definition that we use when it comes to the front yard, side yard, and rear yard. And that's important, because if they're in the rear yard versus the front yard, the fences have different height requirements. So here, this kind of clears it, makes it more black and white on where the front yard and rear yard starts. And the way we worded here, it's referencing that definition earlier on page nine with the building line as the setback line based on the zoning district. So basically, right now, since there's no clear definition, we interpret it as where their, where the building ends is where the front or rear yard starts. So for different people in the same zoning districts, that might be different, and that causes some issues, just because somebody didn't build their house to their maximum setback, now they're not able to build a fence as far back with a six-foot height that they would get on the side yard, for example. So this gives everybody in the same zoning district the same fence height requirements. A lot of ways people get around that right now, since it doesn't, since it's not consistent for the zoning district, is, and we've had this with a few different permit applicants, they'll have their neighbor turn in a fence permit, so that they can go a little bit farther, and then we're able to approve it like that. And I've had a few situations where I had three different fence permits, just to get it approved at different heights, but it was really all just one person trying to get it done. So now if it's based on the setback line, which is being proposed in our amendments, then it would be the same regardless of who's pulling the permit.
Yes, I recently did a fence and we had to pull three permits for two pieces of fence. We all live on a canal, we all agreed, and there was no process that we could just submit a letter, certified, whatever you needed, saying, hey, we all agree on this, and we had to spend the extra money on the permits. And it took a lot longer to get a fence, and it's a hell of a lot nicer than it used to be, and everybody's happy, how about that?
Yeah, so this would just make it based on the setback line, so it would be the same for everyone. There's pros and cons to that. The only con that I really could think of is that if somebody, right now, if somebody has a house that is built beyond the setback line, they can build their six-foot fence a little bit further back, just because they have a non-conforming structure, but this would make them follow the setback lines, except if they got a variance approved, which was added into that definition section. Then scrolling down to swimming pool, this is just, also already exists, swimming pool is required to be surrounded by a four-foot fence. That's Florida Building Code, and it's also stated in our swimming pool section. This kind of just brings it back into our fence code section, so that someone that's building a fence knows to keep that in mind, if they have a swimming pool, there's different requirements. Also, currently, rear yards on the water are not allowed to have a fence higher than three feet, unless it's open, which it could go to four feet. So this makes it clear, makes it black and white, so that someone that doesn't really read code can tell, okay, I have a swimming pool in a rear yard on the water, and this lays it out that, that would mean you need a three-foot, a four-foot fence, but the top foot at least has to be open, and then it would have to follow.
Is there any references made to visibility triangles in this section?
So the visibility triangle is more for intersection visibility, the part that we added, so it's not in the swimming pool, that's on number five.
I think at some point we had discussed that waterfront properties could not bring the fence too high where it can prohibit the neighbors from being able to see across to a point. So we had talked about some visibility triangles along the seawalls at some point.
Yes, so that wasn't brought in this section, this, so this fence section, the entire fence code, we're not proposing to change any of the heights. All the heights are being the same, so the four-foot max already exists and would still exist here. I'm not sure if that really answers your question, but we're not looking to change the heights.
Yeah, we had discussed that when we were discussing accessory, the accessory buildings and the tiki's and stuff. With the fence, they are still going to have to meet the setback for the primary structure, which on the water is 30 feet, so for a six-foot fence, so you wouldn't see a six-foot fence for the first in R1, and then R2 is 25.
Oh, 25 in R1.
25, yeah. So the visibility triangle for this particular topic won't come into play, we're not really, it won't be an issue. Because you can't, your, your setback is the same as your primary structure for the fences. So you can't build your house closer to 30 feet in the water in R1, your fence, your six-foot fence will not go closer than 30 feet to the water, does that make sense? But accessory structures, we did talk about.
So they couldn't, they cannot build like a six-foot high fence right on the property line?
On the property line, but not to the rear property line. So they can build on the side, correct, but not all the way out to the water.
I see.
Yeah, they would have to be 30 feet back in R1, in R2, 25.
That's enough, I guess, that gives you enough for visibility triangle.
Correct, yeah.
But with these changes, you'll be able to go past your, because our houses are offset, so you'd be able to go to 30 feet from the seawall. Even though my house is 60 feet from the seawall, if this passes.
Exactly, and that's.
All right, new fence permit coming down.
To be, to be clear, the 30 feet is specific to R1, R2, and the other districts have their own setbacks, but it'll be specific to the district, but to Joe's point, it'll be uniform now, and it doesn't matter if one house is here and one house is there, you don't have to do the three permits.
Where's the call for the setbacks? I keep trying to read in here and don't see where, where it referenced setbacks.
So if you go back to page nine, the building line, building line means the established by the setback required by the zoning district in which the lot is located. So that would make you reference the actual zoning section, which I don't have printed today, but you would go like, say it's R1, you would go to the R1 zoning section, and then it would give you the building setbacks, and then that's the same setbacks we would apply to the fences.
Thank you, yeah, that's good.
And then continuing onto page 12, the only other addition that we are proposing here is just to add a small non-conforming section. Basically, just putting it black and white, that any fences that don't already meet the fence code would have to comply with the fence code. Right now, it's, that's kind of how we apply it, but it doesn't specifically say that. And a lot of other code sections, like the sign section, have their own non-conforming section. Because in the traditional non-conforming section for the whole code, a lot of times it allows you to get back what you have, and we don't want to allow that for fences. Basically, you would have to follow these guidelines, regardless of what kind of fence you have now.
I kind of disagree with that. Unfortunately, as we're looking, and I, I started going on the county appraisers, and there's properties in, where we're talking about, there's one that's 40 by 40. So if they have a fence around their place, I mean, you, and if they need to do maintenance on it, how are they gonna come within those standards? You know, and, and I understand in terms of the non-conforming, it makes sense, but yet, you know, I don't know how these properties got divided down so low, but yet, it's, yeah, so if you've got one 40 by 40, and then there was some that were 40 by 37 and 43 on the other side, you know, it's, and they tried to replace their fence that's falling apart, I, I don't know that that's really a good thing. And where I'm going with this is there was a, somebody that bought the property over on Gulf Boulevard, and they lived on Madeira Way, and they were trying to put a fence up. Well, it got into a thing of, it was for beautification. The garage, exactly. And, and the way they got around it, I shouldn't say got around it, made it amiable to everybody, all the citizens and everybody that lived there were for it, but yet by code, they couldn't do it. So, yeah, they did, I think they did put it, okay. Well, I think there's a fence, there's, I, yeah.
Sorry, I think I know what you're talking about. They, they, we found a way of combining those lots, and then were able to consider that the rear of the property. So then you're allowed to, it's solid.
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't the issue, it was just they were trying to do a new fence, and there was like three different addresses, and so it was a mess, yes.
I mean, you, but ultimately, I think it worked out. So I don't know that necessarily do we have to put this in, you know, you know, and I'm just thinking future, because we have so many non-conforming lots, you know, it, it's a good and a bad thing, I feel.
That, that's a good point. So this is how we enforce it right now, just putting it clear, but with the, like, small lots, like the 40 by 40, that's a good example. If they were to build a new house, then with the definition we have, they would, and they would get, assuming the lot was 40 by 40, they would probably need a variance to build the house anyways, with the front setbacks 20 feet, and the rear, say it was 15, I'm not sure where it would be, but, then they would probably need a variance anyways, and then with, once they get that variance approved, they would be able to get the fence built within the same setbacks as whatever variance is approved. But say like an existing non-conforming structure at grade, and they have a fence, maybe we could look at adding in this non-conforming section, if it's already existing, and it's within the building line, maybe something like that. I'm not sure, that's a good point, we didn't really think about.
Could we include, could we include language that if it's a non-conforming sized lot? Because they, because the thing is, I wouldn't want someone with like a large lot not bringing it into like a conforming fence if they don't have like a hardship of a small, non-conforming sized lot. So we, it, just to kind of, because I think it would be important to bring people into compliance within reason, but it is, there are quite a bit of houses on non-conforming sized lots also, but it might be good to specify that.
Well, I, yes, I mean, you know, in terms of, you know, as to how exactly you could describe it, or, or, you know, not, maintenance is one thing, but doing new would be, you know, something completely different. Because if they've got a fence and it's falling apart, well, okay, so that's maintenance, you know, so, but to be non-conforming because it's a small lot, I mean, you know, and it, that's gonna be probably getting into a lot of lots, whereas I was at the magistrate's in the odd shape, I mean, you know, the pie-shaped lot, it was 23 feet in the front and 82 in the back. Well, that's considered a non-conforming lot, so where's the fence gonna go then? I, I'm just thinking, you know, avoiding the slippery slope, because we have many, many, many non-conforming lots.
We can definitely talk about this, I think probably one of the, with non-conformities, probably one of the bigger issues we would have is where the non-conforming structure is positioned on the lot may drive some of the fence distances and stuff. So we can kind of talk and see how we best want to approach that for that, for the non-conformities, because the main thing we have is we, we, sometimes we get complaints about fences, so then we respond to it, they have their six-foot fence, it's too far in the rear yard, and we catch it, and they have to correct it. A lot of times for interior lots, we don't get a ton of complaints, but when they want to come and put in a new fence, then we do. But when they want to come and put in a new fence, then we do ask them to become compliant. So I think when we were talking about non-conformities, we were thinking about people who already have fences that may, may not meet the length and setback and sizing. We just want them, if they're coming to do, work on their fence, replace their fence, to become current with our code. So I don't, I think, we don't have a ton of, I don't know, I'm stumbling out.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe instead of maintenance, we could say like, any replacement or a replacement up to 50% of the, you know, something like that and kind of explore.
Yeah, just something, just something so it's not a catch-all that, yeah, I mean, you know, so some people can do it, but if you're getting into a bigger area, yeah, no, then it's like, you need to do it. But for the smaller, non-conforming places.
And here's what we start thinking about as I go, okay, somebody, we're going to tell somebody that, they're going to come in and say, okay, fine, with this permit, I'm going to replace 25 feet. Then I'll see you in three months and replace another 25 feet. So when we start going back and forth about this, like some of it seems easy. Then we start thinking through it and we see the slippery slope. So, but you do have a valid point, so we do have to figure out how to do that. But then not to put the permitee, where they're trying to work the system and us trying to pull, having to pull three permits because we worded ourselves into a situation. So.
Yeah, maybe instead of like a percentage, we could do so many feet over so many feet of replacement. I don't know, we can explore that.
I think, yeah, yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, even, yeah. But no, it's a valid point and we can definitely discuss that and come up with some verbiage and get that going. Because, believe it or not, we have a ton of issues with fences. You just described it, your one permit, you know what you went through. We have it happen a lot. And then when, and when you have a neighbor that gets mad and then they turn in all their other neighbors, the next thing you know, code enforcement's got six complaints and they're all coming to us. So, so yeah, getting this cleaned up and making it very user-friendly for the residents is really important to us. And making it, you know, streamlined as possible. And Joe's been working really hard on this. And I think every time we talk about it, we come up with something, something that we maybe didn't think of before, so.
Well, there's a possibility this is a complete add. So do we go through with all the others and then come back with the non-conformity add in two, three months? I mean, you know.
Something's going to have to be written in.
Well, it wasn't there before.
I think better practice would be to get it all done at once. Because then you're going to have, however they deal with non-conforming now, then you're going to change some stuff and they're going to deal with it. Then you're going to come back in a month and change it and they're going to have a third way to deal with it. So it'd be best if, with all that brain power over there, just give them a couple of days. I bet they'll come up with something like that.
We will not leave this room until that's.
Or even tonight, I was going to give you a couple of weeks, but you know, even tonight.
We can bring something to next month and then we can hash it out again and kind of go over. There are some notes on the side here, you know, Joe's notes. So we can take everything from tonight and then also look at that non-conformity section and then bring it back next month, see what we're feeling then. We'll have a little bit more research and see if that works.
I think that's good.
And change it from two days to two weeks.
So was this our comment sign time or did you have more to present?
For fences?
Yes.
I think that's, I think that's all that we have, very, okay.
Okay, so is there any other questions or comments from the commission?
Hey, Bales.
We both have it written down. And I do have one comment. I just want to thank Joe for all of his hard work in doing this. He's, like he said, he's a few months shy of a year. This is his first endeavor into planning to this level in depth and he's been doing an amazing job. He's been a great team add and we couldn't appreciate him more. So I just wanted to thank Joe.
Thank you, and I agree. And all of you guys have been doing a lot of time in all of this research and that. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Ditto.
So since that's going to be there, we're going to move on, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the next item up is John's Pass Village Activity Center Zoning Workshop. And before you go into that, I've got a few questions about this. To basically kind of clear things up beforehand. One of which is property owned from property line to CCL? Because I know we're going to be talking about the CCL and all that in John's Pass Village. So is the property owned from property line to the CCL? There's one, and I don't know, I've got six of them here. So you want me to go through all six of them or?
So you're talking about, is all the property owned up to the CCL? Or can some of them go past the CCL? We could pull up the property appraiser website to just kind of see where that is.
That's where I was. And it's interesting of how some, you know, I'm trying to determine, you know, what's what. And as, okay, as an example, Tom and Kitty Stewart. The property is 40 by 100. However, the property actually is 40 by 121. So where did that extra 21 feet come from? And that's to the CCL. And then quite a few of the properties down, in fact, that's a good example. There's the CCL line and then their property lines are way, way past that. So can they build to the CCL line or to their property line?
They would be limited to their, the CCL. They would not get to go to the property line in the cases where it extends beyond that. There is some FDEP criteria once you go past the CCL. But our criteria is that is what you get to build up to.
Yeah, so if you look in the zoning, Andrew might be able to do it a little faster than me. Yeah, could you go to MUNICODE R3? We'll see it later in the slide. But the setback line for R3, those are the properties on the beach. So if you're waterfront, if you're on the beach, then your rear setback is a CCL.
And anything that were to ever cross over that then would also involve the FDEP in any sort of category. And there's limitations and stringent rules around how that works. We haven't had to deal with that lately. So I can't speak intimately to the process, but there's not much of an opportunity to build past it.
Okay, so yeah, this is just a section in the code, so you can see it. This is just MUNICODE, just for waterfront yard. So lots that are on the water, the setback is just landward of that CCL.
If a property has to rebuild, they would have to rebuild on the other side of that. Because it looks like some of the condos get pretty, pretty close to it. But I, it's kind of tough to tell sometimes with the property appraiser if it's off a couple of feet. But I know some are pretty close in the pool for that ones beyond it.
So, but that's what they build to their property line, not to the CCL line?
I think maybe in the past, these are older buildings. So I don't know exactly the regulations in the past. I don't know if Marcy you know, but I can't really speak too much about that. But that's what the setback is now.
Yeah, that building was built before the coastal control line was put in place. So if they get wiped out in a storm, they're going to have to follow the new.
That's correct.
And they would have to meet all the FDEP criteria and get a permit from them and go through that process related to the construction activities.
So if their property, if their property is on the Gulf Boulevard side, they can go to the CCL line though. I guess go to the left, go further north? Yeah, like there. Okay, so some of those buildings.
These smaller, these lots that are right here, is that what you're talking about?
Well, the ones on the water, right next to that one. So the properties, well, okay, where's that one? Right by the arrow there, yes.
No, that would be the property line.
So now there's the property, but they went to the CCL line.
Some of these are buildings that were done, I think that house was built in the 80s.
Yeah, and also too, while the property appraiser's office sometimes is very accurate, if you have a site survey and you have a legal description of your deeded property in a survey that shows you own it, I often find sometimes the Pennell's County Property Appraiser doesn't always accurately reflect what somebody legally owns. And I'm sure that Hush can speak to that. So a lot of times, it is a legal survey and we do look at the legal description. And you do find discrepancies, especially along these areas. And especially where property was vacated for any reason and random things like that. And we do vet that when we get a permit. If we get something that, you know, intuitively doesn't look like everything's matching up. In fact, just recently, I sent one to Tom Trask where I couldn't make, I couldn't follow the process of the purchasing and the vacating, all that stuff. And he was able to track it down and clear it up. So we do look into that.
And one thing I wanted to add is that those CCC lines also change from time to time. So, you know, where you see it today wasn't exactly there a few years back. So state has their way of, because of the hurricanes and all the issues we've had, you know, from time to time, they change it and bring it further back from the coastline.
Okay, so then they can build to the CCL line.
Yes.
But they cannot build beyond that?
Yes.
Certain things can be built beyond that, like a little step, you know, if you want to put some, you know. But as Marcy stated, you have to go through DEP and get that permit. You know, sidewalks and certain paths are beyond that CCC line. But you have to go through the state, like we've done some Mobi mats for the cities. And it's beyond the CCC line, but we had to go to the state and get the permit.
Okay, and then one other one. Can anything be built in, on the easements or in easements?
So we don't allow like structures to be built. If you want to do, like driveways will go into an easement, but I wouldn't, like you can't, you wouldn't necessarily put, permit a shed to be built over an easement. Or ideally, no structures in the easement. If you wanted to do a buried propane tank, we don't want it in the easement. It needs to be out of the easement. So we have easements that are owned by Madeira Beach and are between properties. Then we have easements that front the properties, which include Duke, Pennell's County, us. But we at all costs avoid any permanent structures in there. And if we do have something in there like a sidewalk or a plant or something like that, it is on the onus of the homeowner to take care of that. If ever we need to come through and utilize the easement or Duke or whoever, it's the homeowner's responsibility to participate in removing that if they want it saved or whatever, so. But you wouldn't be able to put a pole or something like that into the easement.
Like a trash structure?
That, since it's just a concrete pad, really that's immovable in that situation. Ideally, like if it's just a compactor, I don't know that I've dealt with that. Have you dealt with that specifically?
No, I haven't dealt with that either.
That may, that may be again where we just say, okay, if you want to put your concrete pad there, we'll allow it. Because it's, we also look at ease of the public works team, right? And ability for the trucks to get in and move around. So if it makes it easier with, you know, Megan's crew and she's okay with it and they understand that they have to replace the pad and they're responsible for it, then I could see where we may negotiate that and discuss it. So just a slab like that, I would look at like a driveway or a pathway that we would permit for homeowners or anybody as well.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of all I had initially, so. So your presentation of John's Pass Village Activities.
So y'all are very well aware of what this is. John's Pass Village Activity Center. So back in March, the land use was approved at the local level. I believe it was in February, it was approved at the county level. So the next step is the zoning or implementing that into the land development regulations, which is the zoning. So we recently had three workshops. And they went really well. You had April 13, 18, and 20th. And I'll kind of go through this. A lot of these slides will look very similar to the slides that we've gone over previously. So just with local land regulations, really looking at these three different plans. So here at the top, we have Ford Pennellis with their countywide plan. And so what they have in there is the rules, strategies, and map. So with every parcel, that's not good. With every parcel, you're going to have a different land use category at the county. That'll show your intensities, like your floor area ratio, your densities, how many units per acre, residential and temporary lodging. And then your allowed uses along with the impervious surface ratio. So going down here, locally, we have two different plans. So we have the comprehensive plan and really focusing in on that future land use element. It looks very similar to Ford Pennellis. You have your intensities, densities, uses, and ISR, impervious surface ratio. And down here at the very bottom is our Code of Ordinances. And that includes our land development regulations, which has everything into fences, what we were talking about earlier today, landscaping, zoning. A lot of these amendments that you see that come before you are in the land development regulations. So a lot of things in there. So what we need to do now is really implement that activity center. We have it at the county level. We have it at our comprehensive level. And now it's really putting it in our land development regulations, so our zoning. Here are the three maps. So now we have the activity center, this dark blue. Locally, it's this purple. And now we're going to be going to the zoning. We've gone over this quite a bit. Basically, a lot of the buildings were built in the between 40s and 80s. And then in 1983 is really the creation of the modern Madeira Beach zoning, with uses, heights, setbacks. So a lot of these buildings that are actually built don't meet the required setbacks. And so it's really looking at that and determining what is appropriate within that area as well as the height and uses. And we've gone over this quite a bit. Why an activity center, just to protect the unique character, make sure that there's compatible redevelopment, consistency with the countywide plan, and really proactive approach. And land development regulations, I was just talking about. We're really focusing in on zoning with John's Pass Village zoning. So creating new zones, which will, you'll see the uses. You have your primary use, accessory use, and special exception. So at the special exception, that's where you have to go to the special magistrate and ask for a specific use. And that's lined out in our code to what you can ask for. Then you see the setbacks, building height, which is measured from design flood elevation. And then in some sections in the zoning, you'll see these special requirements. Like we have a few zones that have an additional five-foot buffer or five-foot setback if you're next to a residential property. And I'll let Marcy talk about height and setback.
So there is no architectural review required, right? Architectural meaning not necessarily floor plans, but just aesthetics?
No, not now. And we are looking to, we will be writing in design guidelines. No, not now, and we are looking to, we will be writing in design guidelines, but we need to see if, if they're, we're hoping that they're light enough that they wouldn't have to go to planning commission, but we're going to be discussing that, probably not today, but whenever we have drafts, is there, is there a threshold that we would like it to go to planning commission for review, kind of acting as like your board of architectural review?
Thank you.
Jenny. Have you, since you've done the workshop, the three meetings of the workshop, have you and Marcy compiled all that information? And do you have it?
Yes, so in your packets.
Oh, it is in the packet?
Yeah.
Ooh.
In your packets, we'll kind of go over this, so Marcy's going to talk about height, setbacks, and then.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, just so you know where we're going with this, and this went to BOC last workshop, and we haven't made any changes to, Andrew and I really went over it, as Marcy was out on.
Conference.
A conference, not vacation conference. So, we've gone over it, and we'll be going over it again, but we have that in your packet, so.
Do you?
Once we go to each character district, we'll be kind of referencing the character district, and then the tables that we've created with all the information.
Do you have a percentage of what people just wanted to go for the 34-feet height?
I, I have that here, in your packet, we'll kind of go over it, but we have written down what each table said, and then I've made just a rough tally of, you know, okay, this many people wanted this height, this many people that wanted this height, so going back and forth with that, and sometimes it was like a combination, or they're very close to the tallies, so. Oh, an Excel sheet. Okay, Marcy.
Okay, so, as Jenny said, our height is measured from the design flood elevation, so any of the heights that we discuss, that we're going to permit and go with, will be, as she said, from the design flood elevation, which is our base flood elevation, plus our freeboard, which at this point in time, our freeboard is four feet, which is a pretty robust freeboard, so it's, it's, it's pretty high for that, so that's good. The example you have here is from Barefoot Beach, so we kind of wanted to pull a, an example building to show how we do the height, and as it's shown here, I can't remember, so study, let's think on this one.
Marcy, wouldn't that be a good idea, where you say freeboard, DFE plus freeboard, wouldn't it make sense just to put four foot next to the freeboard, just so that when people see it, they can just immediately tell it's three, four feet?
Unless if it's changed in the future, because it used to be two feet, and then I think it was 2021, it was changed to four feet, just to make it a little bit more consistent, so you have to, don't have to change it in all the zoning codes.
And there's nowhere on your radar that you'd be adopting that vulnerability, right?
We've talked about it, but we would really want to talk to Lisa Foster with the county and really dive into it, so we haven't talked about it at that level, but just kind of passing it through, like, oh, we should probably look more into it, so it might be something in the future, and then.
I'm not necessarily encouraging it, I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, well, we've been, we've been asked from the county to adopt it, but we really need to see, what would that entail if we did adopt it, what does it really look like, and we haven't gotten that far into it, so.
So, as pictured here, I think Andrew just pulled it from the spreadsheet, 68 feet?
Yeah, it's on page 53.
Okay.
We have the worksheet that we handed out during the.
Can't hear you.
Sorry.
On, on page, on page 53, we have the, one of the worksheets we handed out during the meeting, I just wanted to have a copy just to show, and, and the table on page 53, it shows the highest buildings from DFE for each character district, and Barefoot Beach Club is in the transitional character district.
So this is a good example of, at 68 feet, you're looking at about five stories over parking, I believe, so, so that's how we'll be measuring the height, so anytime we refer to it, it is as measured from the design flood elevation. What we've noticed. In our research too, what we've noticed is the average floor height, people like to talk in stories and floors, the average floor height ranges from 11 to 14 feet, and that's floor-to-floor, and it just depends on the age of the building, the design of the building, but that height gives, you know, the ability to run your electrical, plumbing, light, you know, lighting, but HVAC too, so sometimes the floor height isn't 14 feet, it's maybe like 12 feet, and you have two feet for any extra space above, so for the purpose of our conversation, we would just kind of reference it for people to be between 11 and, 11 to 14 feet, on average for a story. Our setbacks are measured from property line, so whenever you see the setback, it's measured from the property line to the outermost edge of the structural member at grade, so a lot of times, any part of the structure, whether it's an overhang with a column, supporting column, or anything like that, that is what we measure to. As you go to the second story, in our current code, there is allotments for encroachment into the setback, for instance, you can have a patio or deck that cantilevers up to four feet into the, like, rear setback, so there are options like that, so as we discuss our code, and what we're proposing in the activity center, we will be talking about encroachments, or, you know, different verbiage as you begin to elevate and go into second, third stories, but at grade, we measure the setback as referenced from the property line. Oh, and of course, as we talked about earlier, setbacks are from the property lines, or with a waterfront rear yard from back of seawall, or the CCL, as we discussed earlier, so if you're on, like, typically, we have this with single residence families, the rear, the rear is measured from the water's face of the seawall to the rear of the structure, so that's how we, we measure it, is from the water's face of the seawall.
No stepback requirements, right?
The setbacks, we, we do not have any now in our code, but you will hear some, some of those probably coming up for John's Pass Village Activity Center, we will be talking about setbacks.
Okay.
So here on this slide, it just shows the existing zoning map, and then the proposed zoning map with the different character districts. So now we can kind of go back and forth between each character district, and then that sheet, or table of the outcomes from those three meetings. So we'll just start here with the boardwalk. The existing zoning is C2, the setbacks are the front, which is from boardwalk place, it's 20 feet, the side is five feet on one side, and then on the rear or waterfront, there's none, and the height from DFE is 34 feet. And here's just an example, we just plucked a random parcel, and then imposed those setbacks on that, so that's what that looks like. And this is the tallest building that we found on the boardwalk on C2, so we just tried to measure how, how high that would be using today's base flood elevation and today's freeboard, which is four feet, so that comes out to a little over 37 feet from design flood elevation to the very top of that peak.
Is that how you measure height?
Yes, yes, and there's certain things that can exceed, like mechanical units, architectural features, like parapet walls.
Elevator shaft.
Elevator shafts, exactly.
Do we have a dimension, or height for that? 16 feet or so?
Oh, that can exceed over, it's 20 feet.
20 feet?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's current, that's in a, yes, that's in the code, I think it's in, it's the open sky section, or it's near that section, but it's already in the code. So now we'll just kind of go through, and we're.
And if you have flat roof, it just goes to the top of the flat roof?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so this might be a little difficult, but, so here we have at the end, what Andrew was referring to earlier, these are the worksheets that we passed out, showing the current setbacks, and the highest existing buildings that we could, we could find in each district. And then, this is the outcomes of each table, so what we did is, everybody got in round tables, and we would talk about each character districts, the height, setbacks, and special requirements, and go around the room, having a representative from each table, so this is what that captures. So looking at this, we had 37 feet, or what's currently built to the highest building was more popular from, we had eight, eight versus five, five, five votes for the 34 feet from DFE, which is the current code, so it looks like the 37, or the highest building that's there, that's kind of the, the outcome of the boardwalk area. And the setbacks are a little bit harder to, to go through, because there's a lot of variation in it, so you can see there is some comments about the setbacks, maybe on the second floor, or I think maybe in the boardwalk on one of the days, let me see, of the cantilever above the design flood elevation on that first day, so five foot on the ground, none above, and then far end setback only, and cantilever above the design flood elevation on the front. So you have more of a variation on the setbacks, but the height's a little bit easier to, to count up and, and tell you. But, and then we also asked different notes, so other things to consider, definitely design guidelines, the walkability of boardwalk, and then having no overhang over the actual boardwalk. And we also wanted to ask planning commission, any input, questions, and, and we'll go through character district through character district, so if you had any inputs on height, setbacks, or anything other, like, design guidelines, this would be a good time to talk about that.
I know I saw that you had all of these, do you have anything compiled, of the total of what you did?
Right now, I just have this, and I've, I've done the tallies of the height, just kind of a personal note, but we haven't put that together in, in a document, we're trying to figure out the best way to do that with the setbacks, it's not really something, I guess you could tally, but it gets a little difficult when you, when you start to get to the setbacks, so we're trying to figure out the best way to, to pull all that together, but this is what we have right now, is really the, the input from those meetings.
Oh, is, is it on? We wanted to make sure you guys at least had a draft version of the table, we want to bring a summarized results to the BOC workshop this month, and then you guys would see it for the planning commission meeting in June, but we wanted to at least have something to discuss, which is this draft version of the, of the results of the meeting.
And another thing that we've talked about, which looks like, you'll probably lean more that way, is measuring from the eve of, of the building, and then allowing either a certain pitch, or for the roof, or an additional height for the top of the roof, so not to just encourage flat roofs, since we know that a lot of the character-defining buildings in John's Pass Village, or what you think of, like, the tourist center, commercial area, you do have a lot of these metal roofs with, like, a gabled end, instead of just a flat roof, so, and it depends on your character district, but definitely don't.
We'll see, so, in, in terms of, as Huish had said, so you've got a potential of a 20-foot additional from the height, so you're looking at, as, as example, you own low-intensity mixed, 44 feet, so that's 14 feet and 44 feet, 58 feet, and then you can have another 20 feet potentially to be.
78?
Yeah, I mean, of, of elevator and, and different things there.
Yes, it's, it's quite specific on the certain things that can exceed that height, mechanical units, like, we can pull it up in the code.
It's not supposed to be like habitable space with air conditioning and livable rooms and stuff, it's really supposed to specifically be, be, be either architectural or, or stuff for, for mechanical access, so, in our code, it's pretty specific to avoid that issue of someone trying to turn it into a habitable space.
Or getting extra height, so.
Okay, we see, and that, and that's where, I think, where many of the people are so concerned, you know, here you're talking about 78 feet, you know, for the top of a building, and that's tall.
And a lot of those 78, or, you know, that you see in that transitional district, a lot of those were either done with PD zoning, or through a variance, which we don't allow that type of, you couldn't get a variance for height, basically, it would be very difficult to do nowadays, but the code was different back then, so we want to make sure that that's very clear of, like, those are exceptions, not saying that everything should be that, that height, but those are the, the highest buildings in those districts.
Green 1983. We, our zoning code allowed you to do 60 feet from grade in the R3 zoning district, many of those older condo buildings built around that time, or built to 60 feet from grade, where you have ground floor, one floor parking, and then five floors of condominiums above it, after that, they chopped the height down to three stories over parking, or 40 feet from grade, and what happened after they did that, that led to people applying for variances when they came in with a new condo development to, because basically that height limit was unusable, it, it was designed to break zoning, and that basically led to people applying for variances to go around it, which isn't good, because you want consistent outcomes, and you don't want that leading to that, and even examples like around here, like the Serrano condominium, which is what, more like what a modern five stories over parking building would be like, had to get a variance to allow her, I see, 60 feet from BFE to do a modern five-story over parking condominium. I guess the, the challenge is, if any of those condo, condominium buildings had to be rebuilt down there, they would most likely be taller than what currently exists because of the base flood elevation, plus four feet of freeboard, and people expect higher ceilings in condominiums compared to what they expected in the 70s and early 80s, and it's kind of a challenge reconciling that, because you're not going to be able to build a one-to-one recreation of a 1970s six-story condo building, like, you're not, you're just not going to build that, so, I mean, even something like the Serrano is 10-foot taller than any of those older ones down there, so, I kind of rec, because most, for the most part, the heights were agreeable, about like the 34, the 44 feet, depending on zoning district or lot size, but kind of reconciling those heights for any of those six-story condo buildings that were built before the zoning change, or stuff like Barefoot Beach Club that was done with a PD, or, or Madeira Bay that was done with a variance, we understand, a lot of people don't like those heights, but there has to be kind of some sort of middle ground between the 44 feet from DFE, and, and something like Barefoot Beach Club or Madeira Bay, because we understand that those are too tall, but allowing to be able to at least build those five-story resident, five stories over parking, or six stories from grade, residential condominium buildings would, would probably be important to allow people to be able to build back, within reason, on, on a lot large enough to handle it, most likely at least half an acre. large enough to handle it, most likely at least half an acre, or larger, which there aren't really any vacant lots that large down there. So it would be more of, if someone wanted to rebuild those buildings.
How did you, um, excuse me, how did you establish the four feet of freeboard? How did you, most towns is two.
Yeah, and we were two, um, prior to that, twenty-twenty-one. And we had to make, we had to adopt the new firm, I think it was like August twenty-twenty-one, something around there, and that was about the same time that the vulnerability assessment or study was coming out from the county. Remember, they were wanting us to adopt it, but we didn't really, we didn't have time to review it in depth, and like, how we would, how would it affect the community, so that's why we had, we adopted a higher freeboard back then. And we still haven't adopted the county vulnerability study, I don't know if we will. It's definitely, probably going to be something that we discuss, um, when we do our watershed management plan, I'm sure that, that'll be discussed probably at that time.
So I have a couple of other questions. As far as the twenty feet of height for accessory, could that be reduced to, let's say, sixteen feet?
Uh, we could look at that, that's not in this section of, of the code, um, that we're talking about, it's a different section, so it would be a different ordinance, but um, yeah, that's definitely something that we could look at as well.
Yeah, that will contribute to, obviously, not as much height, yeah, you know, but, so the next question has to do with the, what sort of flexibility would a PD plan, or a special magistrate have, when it comes to heightened setback?
Like I stated before, the variance process now, you have to meet all six criteria. Before, I can't remember when it was changed, but it was a majority of the six criteria, now it's all of the six criteria, and something like height wouldn't, wouldn't really fall within that criteria.
Like, going back to doing a few variances, either we, we need to, I guess, set a line in the sand about the, the height thing, because either people can build back to the height that you got, or they, or, or you need to tell people they can't build as tall, and they, they don't get their height that they currently have, and kind of just make a decision, because it, it seems like, either rely on, well, I mean, the PD is a whole different beast, and that would be a, a separate ordinance to, to change that, because right now with the PD height, it, it's, it's based off comparing it to other PD projects, and it's kind of, well, so, and which this ordinance wouldn't really touch, this would be more the specific zoning, like, like you, for a PD, you would have to rezone it anyways.
All right, was there any comments specifically to boardwalk area that anybody would want to add in? And we can go, so I'll be jumping back and forth, so hopefully this won't be too painful. Let's see, so, we've done... Boardwalk, now we're going to go to commercial core, this is the next character district. It's existing C1 zoning, so the setbacks currently are, with the front, none, side, ten feet on one side, uh, and rear is twenty-five feet. The height from design flood elevation is thirty-four feet. And this is where the commercial core is. So just an example on a few different lots of what that could look like. Um, here you're measuring from the design flood elevation, thirty-four feet. Which can look very different if you don't have a flat roof, as you can see. Uh, and then grabbing the tallest building there, sixty-five and a half feet from grade, or, it's hard to read, fifty, a little over fifty-five feet from design flood elevation.
So, so this, so this is- Oh, takes a second to load up. So this is an example of a building that was done via variances back then, before uh, we changed it to not allow for that. So that's what I mean, where like, a lot of these lower heights weren't really workable for what really needed to be built. And as you can see, they, they hit a lot, or they, they used like, like design and architectural, like, uh, features to reduce the bulk of the height, because as you can see, the six-story parking structure is hidden behind this two-to-three-story kind of older style, like, like downtown commercial street. So, there are ways we can write in the code to ma, make height less, less bulky and imposing by requiring it to be set back a certain amount.
Just like the stepbacks for, uh, the second floors, as you can see that building that we all know, right here, and it really gives a visualization that there's multiple buildings. These are about like forty feet, which is like your typical lot down in John's Pass in this area.
Now, where's the property line there, is that-
It's actually, um, let's see, do we still have the property browser up? I'll show you, it's a little weird there, actually. So this John's Way, they actually own that. So the property line jogs right here, so they own this lot, and then it also goes, if I can click it, over to the boardwalk as well.
But the overhang is still within the property?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we can write the code to allow something similar to what's, what's there.
It's a four-foot walkway, correct?
Uh, under here, I think it's-
No, on top.
Oh, on top. I am not sure how, how wide it is, I think-
Is it five?
I think the sidewalk's like eight feet.
At least six.
Uh, let's see, this one.
Could actually, it's hard, I can't read it, text is too small.
Yeah, I am not sure exactly how, how wide this walkway is up here, but we could probably find it in the building plans.
But yeah, it's important, it's on their property, though, so.
Uh, so, just some of the buildings that are in this commercial core, and you can see this, this building back here, this blue building, that steps back, um, the more stories it has, and then the back, it has camouflage parking as well. It's really under the building, um, is where you see the, the park, or you don't see the parking, but if you drive on Fisherman's Alley, that's, that's how you get into the parking in this building. So we can kind of go back to here.
With the commercial core, I think it's also important to remember that you do have these like smaller streets cutting through it, so compared to other beach communities in Pinellas County that have some larger lots where you can do lar, large buildings, John's Pass doesn't have that, it has these, these, um, like, like, nice little alleyways and stuff, so you end up, even if, you're allowed to combine the lots, but you'd still would end up having to do separate buildings on, on those lots, and you wouldn't be able to build a bulkier, singular, because you have these public right-of-ways cutting through it.
So kind of the, the gist of what we've heard throughout those three workshops, um, we had a tie between the thirty-four feet from DFE and fifty-five feet, which is the highest building, so, um, we did have some discussions on the acreage count, and maybe having, uh, if it's, you're equal to, or less than half an acre, doing thirty-four feet, um, if you're greater than half an acre, doing fifty-five feet, so something like that, so we're probably going to play with the idea of, um, acreage and, and the height in that way. Uh, other, other things that came out was, um, outdoor cafes, pedestrian activity, um, making things pedestrian-friendly, definitely design guidelines, and keeping that Main Street look, uh, and then also looking at those second floor, or any higher stories, an increased setback, kind of similar to that garage. Um, and then definitely, if there's any garage, having, having it camouflaged to where it looks like that, uh, Main Street, Main Street look, and breaking up that facade as well. All right, and then a lot of the setbacks that we heard, um, see, a lot of it was similar, but we also discussed on the corner lots, go to, hmm, I'll lose this, but, on, there are some corner lots, so, um, also taking that in consideration, I'm going to show you, the corner lots, and making sure that those are pedestrian-friendly as well, um, just with the setbacks, so really looking into that, and taking that into consideration, and there were also comments on, uh, writing in the code to make sure that Fisherman's Alley is the rear, um, especially looking at those, those corner lots, um, over here, and keeping that pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. That's kind of the outcome of-
The street in front of that parking lot, they own that street?
Yes, John's, John's Way, I believe it's called.
So-
Very odd.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then as I'm looking, yeah, the, the alleyway running through there is owned by the other property.
Fisherman's Alley.
Are you talking about Fisherman's Alley?
Yeah, Fisherman's Alley's ours, we, we own that.
No, I, the, that alleyway, right at the bottom of your screen.
Uh, Fisherman's Alleyway continues on through, until there.
Called John's Way.
And I guess we vacate, maybe vacated-
And then you do have a boardwalk place, which they don't own, but they do own that, this road right here, and then John's Way. But yeah, with the setbacks, you can kind of see here, just making sure that we take these corner lots into consideration, um, making sure that there's, maintain their pedestrian-friendly atmosphere and design. So, it's definitely something that will be written in, uh, the zoning as well. And then, did anybody have any additional comments for commercial core, this, this area? Okay, we can go on.
We're easy.
All right, so we're going across Gulf Boulevard to John's Pass Resort, and here we have the R3 zoning. So, it depends on your use, and then also the width, um, for the setbacks. So front is twenty feet, if you're single-family to triplex, multifamily hotel, commercial is twenty-five feet. Your side yard setbacks, if it's single-family to triplex, um, less than fifty feet wide, it's five feet. A single-family to triplex, greater than fifty feet wide, and multifamily hotel and commercial is ten feet. Rear is twenty-five feet, or if you're on the water or beach, it's a CCCL. Your height is forty-four feet from DFE, and there is a special requirement that hotels or multifamily at a BUTS residential, there's that additional five-foot setback. And in this area, we see, you know, the older condos, it, we do have a, a lot of mix, um, and you'll see in the transitional area too, um, of smaller buildings, and then you do have also like these larger condos here, uh, like Beach Place and Surf Song, and like what Andrew was talking about earlier, a lot of those were built before the modern zoning code, um, which had different standards that exceed what, what our standards are today for the height. So, and then we just have some examples, um, just plucking this, this property here. So at the height, like Marcy was talking about earlier, uh, we're seeing an average of eleven to forty-four, eh, eleven to fourteen feet per story. Um, so forty-four feet could really be somewhere between three stories, or four stories, so just keep that in mind when we're talking about height. And this was on beach-
Yeah, and this, this shows the example, the sixty feet from grade standard that existed back then, so there's, a lot of the older condo buildings are built to this standard shown on, on the screen.
And so you can see the, putting in the current, um, BFE, and then four foot of freeboard, uh, it's fifty feet, eight inches, and then here's where we have that allowance of like mechanical units and things, um, that exceeds that height. So if you measured that, then it's really, what, seventy-two, is it, almost seventy-three feet, um, but we wouldn't measure up to that.
Yeah, and but this is another example of how, if someone tried to, if this had to be rebuilt, like this, this got destroyed during a hurricane, the challenge is, to build a five-story-over-parking, or six-story-from-grade structure to modern standards, it's probably going to be at least five to the ten feet taller from D, DFE, and I, I don't know what the base flood elevation was back then, but it'll end up being at least, it'll significantly taller to compensate for the hi, uh, additional height from the, the additional freeboard, and then the additional height per floor, and that's kind of the challenge reconciling that, because we, we understand about, uh, concerns related to height, and it's kind of, kind of like a fine line between allowing people to be able to build back to kind of what, around what they had, while making sure we don't allow for like high-rises you'd see in, in other cities, which we, we don't want. Um, but, but we, that's kind of the challenge, trying to find a, the, the, a good balance between protecting that, but not opening the door for, for stuff, um, the community doesn't want, either.
And then it's also important to keep in mind that there are smaller lots, um, and lots that are not on the beach, so just kind of what those setbacks look like as well, and keeping that in mind while we're doing the zoning.
So I have a question, in terms of a hurricane, God forbid, let's say, if a property is destroyed, would they have to conform to these regulations, or can they be grandfathered then for what was there before? Because this is act of God, and how would you treat that?
Andrew knew exactly where it was going. So, so if we go to the non-conforming section of the code, uh, it really varies on your use, and if it's considered a catastrophic loss, or if it's just an involuntary loss, there's a little bit of a difference. Uh, if it's catastrophic, you're going to have an area, and it's going to be a declared disaster in that area, so, like a hurricane, uh, something like that, where involuntary, say someone, someone's building cotton fire, um, kind of a one-off. So, there's a slight variation between those two sections in the non-conforming code, and it depends on your type of use, um, Andrew's getting to it right now. So, this is a catastrophic loss, so, for multifamily hotel, motel, motor lodges, uh, they can be rebuilt to the same density, height, and side setbacks, but you have to conform to the front setbacks, um, the CCCL, floodplain regulations, fire, parking codes, and then other, other requirements that active-
The height part is what concerns me, because as I've showed with the example of that older building versus something newer that was built in the last twenty years, like the Serrano, you have about a ten-foot height difference between the old building versus the newer six-story-from-grade building, so in our, in our, currently in our code, it has to be the ex- So in our, in our, currently in our code, it has to be the exact same height, but from, from, but from current floodplain regulations. So would it be possible to build five stories over parking or six stories from grade building within these limitations? Like that, that could be a challenge.
Of course, the state can also have a say-so with FEMA. They would, I'm not sure if they would have to, you know, meet the new FEMA requirements or not.
Yeah, yeah, they would. Yeah, we require it. So the new floodplain regulations, which are like the FEMA regulations. So you can see that it's slightly different based off of your use. And then here, multi-family and R1, R2 on a non-conforming lot. So a little different there as well, commercial. So, a little different. And then here's the reestablishment after involuntary loss. So if it's damage greater than 50%, it can be repaired or reconstruct, reconstructed in a manner which guarantees each dwelling unit, tourist unit, and all permitted accessory uses can be restored to the same square footage, which existed to the same day. So based on that, you would still have to meet setbacks, height. And it might be a little, might be a little difficult in some certain situations, because since restored to the same square footage, which can you get that square footage if, you know, now we have different height regulations? So it's a little, it's a little tricky. We have, luckily, we haven't been in the situation of using this section in the code, but if we need to use it, we want to make sure that it is, it's usable. So we have a long list of things that we need to do. Non-conforming section is one of those. So you will be seeing this in the future. It's not gonna be within the next month or two, because we definitely need to get through the John's Pass Village. But we understand that there's some concerns in the non-conforming section, so you will eventually be seeing this. Okay, so in John's Pass Resort, there's a variety of different buildings. So going to the spreadsheet, the outcomes, here we are. John's Pass Resort. So tallying up the, the heights that we, that we received, it was pretty close between allowing the tallest building in the section versus what the code reads. So there, this also might be an opportunity to explore that lot acreage threshold with the height. But it's just one idea of, of going forward. And then a lot of the setbacks, we, comments that we received are just to maintain the current code with R3.
Is there any place that talks about ISR?
Yes, and the ISR that was adopted and the land use was 85, maybe 85%. And we also carry that into zoning as well. All right. And let's see. Yeah, and just looking at these other things. Possible design standards, we definitely want design standards in say like the boardwalk area, commercial core area, traditional village. So those like touristy areas, definitely design guidelines there. There was some discussion of possibly carrying those design standards in this section, as well as like the transitional districts, so just everywhere. So we may do something like that. So that was one of the comments. And then allowing smaller properties to be rebuilt. So that really leads us to relooking at the non-conforming section to really protect those smaller properties and make sure that everything in our non-conforming section of the code is up to date and makes sense and really protects those property owners.
One, one interesting thing in the, in the master plan, they, they did have proposed land development regulations for like the zoning districts down there and along the beachside that, that weren't, they weren't adopted by the city, but they were proposed in the plan. And it's interesting in the R3 zoning that it did propose to go back to the old height standard from pre-1983 in it, depending on, on lot size. So it's even interesting, even back then, it kind of brought up how the, that, the reduction just didn't work and it didn't lead to the, the desired outcomes. That, so and even now, a lot of the heights that were kind of being discussed were, are fairly similar to what was, it proposed in the master plan back then, 20, 20 years ago.
All right.
Jenny?
Yeah.
Your design standards, eventually you're gonna pass all of this, and people are gonna come in and start building. What exactly do you mean by design standards? Are you going to put something in the code that they're going to have to, have some kind of?
Yes. And then also, we're looking at having some standards and then some guidelines of, of say like materials and things. So that wouldn't be, you have to adhere to this, but these are kind of the guidelines of what we would like it to look like. So almost like a mix of both of those, that's what we envision right now.
Because as, as of right now, the, the planning board doesn't really have a say in that.
That's correct.
And we would like a say in that, and I don't know why we don't have a say in it.
And we don't have design guidelines or design standards right now anywhere in our code, so that would be, that would be why.
Because moving forward, and I, I think the panel would all agree, this is very important, extremely important. This either makes it or breaks it. And what happens in the next five to 10 years, as far as all the development that happens down there, is gonna be a win or it's gonna be a lose. If it's not attractive, people are gonna keep going. And that's my concern.
Yeah.
Because I'm proud to live here. I'm proud to be here. And, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to put the best foot forward with the planning board. And, you know, so that we make the right decisions and the right look. And, because there's two buildings on Gulf Boulevard that was just built, they're exactly the same. The only thing they changed was the second story railing. They're right up, they're across from Caddy's, just. And the, that, that developer is doing that in Treasure Island, and he's doing it in, St. Pete Beach. And for a little extra money, that could look a lot more attractive. And that's what I'm getting at. I'm not, I'm not trying to overspend the developer. I just want what is right for Madeira Beach and the look that we want, and the look that we want to keep. Because right now, you know, I see a lot of things that have to be changed.
Yeah, and that's what we were, I kind of briefly talked about that a little earlier of possibly having like a threshold of, you know, maybe so much, so many square footage or something like that. Definitely if it's a new building, something on, on those lines would have to go to planning commission to act as kind of like your board of architectural review. So we're looking into that. I think once we can bring a draft of the zoning and like really having this in front of you as this is what it would look like, we can really get down to, okay, well, where do we want that? Where's the design guidelines look like? So Andrew and I have been tirelessly working on that. But I think having the actual draft is going to be easier to, for, for everybody on the planning commission and VOC to really look at that, to see where those, maybe those thresholds are, or what those design guides, guidelines look like. I think that'll be an easier way to really review it, you know, going forward.
I think what's also there is more community involvement. And you've got seven people here, different than the plan, than the board of commissioners. And you guys do an excellent job. I mean, you'll, but in terms of getting another set of seven eyes, seven sets of eyes on the planning stuff, and that's where I think John and I'm certainly here as well, we should be seeing more of the planning stuff, is I think what he's getting into.
Yeah, we don't see anything. In other words, they can go downstairs, get a building permit, and we never see the designs, we never see the building, we don't see anything. All of a sudden, we'll drive around, there it is. And, and that's a perfect example. Like last month, I was bed wrapping, bed mouthing a, a builder that we all know, and I put my foot in my mouth, because then I found out at one of the workshops, you know, I see this building as I go past John's Pass, it's sticking up and it's a square-looking building. So I was sitting there the other day, and a gentleman turned to me and said, have you seen the finishes on that building? And I said, no. I said, as far as I'm concerned, it's horrible, because it's a square building. And they basically said to me, when he gets that done, you're gonna be in awe, because I've seen the finished plans. We never saw the finished plans. We don't, you know, Michael goes by that building a lot, and so does the other Michael. But we never saw the finished plans. The second thing is, we have Karn's building the restaurant, which looks fantastic waterside. But 80% of this business is not gonna be waterside, it's gonna be driving up to it. So I asked him to change the facade, so it looks, and looks better. What I'm getting at is, you have two buildings that are gonna be finished, well, you don't even have one started, but the plans. If we could take the two of those buildings and anybody that comes before us, basically saying, this is, this is what we're looking for. This is the caliber of buildings that we want to see there. And make it so that's, you know.
So I think the thing with that would be really review, re-reviewing the site plan process, because right now, there's a threshold for when it comes to planning commission. And a lot of those buildings, I'm assuming those, those buildings that you're talking to, talking about, those did not meet the threshold for a major site plan review. And the major site plan reviews, those are the ones that go to planning commission. Everything else underneath, minor or intermediate, those don't, aren't required to go to planning commission. So we could, I would say not in John's Pass Village, but if y'all wanted to do that, we could relook at the site plan process and seeing if we want to change those thresholds. So then you would see more of those buildings. And then also, we don't have design guidelines anywhere in the city, so there's nothing that even staff can, can say, oh, you have to have this certain feel, you have to have these certain finishes, it has to have these certain step, step backs, you know, say on the second or third floor. So a lot of what we see is a box, you know, and that's really all that we can review. We can't go away from the code and say, oh, you have to have these finishes on this building. So we don't have those design guidelines in place now, but we definitely want to have those in place in John's Pass Village.
Fantastic.
And I think the Village has done a good job of taking care of itself with the touristy vibe and the look there, and right down to the signs that we've discussed, that they're non-conforming with a lot of the signs, but it adds to the character and the charm. But I agree, some of the buildings that go up on Gulf Boulevard, they don't come before us if they're not planned development, or they're not going for variances, and they're just within the guidelines that are in place, we never see it. And then we get a shoebox or-
Well, and then even what staff can say is very limited. It's, we're based on the code. It's always on the code. So, and if the code doesn't have anything in there, then we can't require it.
So is there some way we can change the code? That's the big, the big magilla here.
Yes, we can always change it. So right now, I would say definitely get through John's Pass Village zoning. We have to adopt that right now. The area is kind of in limbo of, oh, your land use says this, but your zoning says some things slightly different. So that's what we're trying to get through now. Definitely having design guidelines. Sounds like the board would like design guidelines everywhere in John's Pass Village. Great feedback, so we will definitely have that in, in the zoning. We'll kind of look at those thresholds of design guidelines. We can always revisit that. Just because it's in the code doesn't mean you can never touch it again. And then something in the future we can look at is the site planning process, looking at those thresholds and if we want to adjust those as well.
Great.
Going back to John's Pass Village zoning, so John's Pass Resort, oh, we just went over that. So let me go to the next section. Let's see, where, where, where? Low-intensity mixed use. So this is on Pelican. This is also R3 zoning. So kind of what that looks like, which we already just visited. Tallest building, which I'm sure a lot of y'all have seen, going up is the 44 feet above DFE. And here on Pelican, you do have a mix of single families, and then you have like these older beach cottages that are used for rentals. So going to the spreadsheet. Intensity mixed use. Yeah, that first day, we ran out of time. We were not giving us, we gave us a lot of time for each discussion, which was great, but then we kind of ran out of time at the very end. But a lot of, a lot of what we saw was to maintain the current code. We did have some comments of reducing that height, but the majority was just matching the current code. And then some of the comments you can see here, allow for sidewalks, install trash compactors, which is cities looking into, and try and really clean up Pelican.
One thing we're able to, to do while we're revising our LDRs is, we, we did look at other cities like Dunedin, for example, that do have, require step backs above certain floors. So one option on the low-intensity mixed use, if we want to have some, the upper floors after the second or third floor be stepped back, we can do that. So we, we have, have the chance to update that based on, on kind of concern, like about overly square buildings.
This is the one I got the most questions about.
Which one? Traditional Village? Or the low-intensity Pelican?
Yes, because Pelican Lane has been a disaster, and it's god-awful for, since the, when they put it in, basically. But I think most people are most confused as, it seems like, you know, I live in that district, so 129th and 131st, I was bombarded with questions, and I couldn't make the workshops, but I told them to go. So I'm not sure if you had a, do you know, like, did you have positive, negative feedback from 129th and 131st that stood out to you, or?
No, I know that we had some people that live on 129th, but-
Because they're gonna be the most affected by these changes.
Yeah.
Especially the one- Especially the one way, people have a lot of concerns with that, like which direction, and you know, I just said, "Go to the workshop because I don't have the answers."
Well, and I think on Pelican, it was, I mean, you can see based on this spreadsheet that a lot of them just said to maintain the current code and really look at cleaning up Pelican and, you know, the back of that commercial.
I think everybody's for cleaning it up.
So, that, that was really the majority of what I've heard. Andrew, Marcy, do you remember?
Yeah, that, that's pretty much it, just more or less maintain it the same, certain, like architectural design and cleaning up, especially because of all those like dumpsters and stuff on, on the commercial side of it. But for the most part, like, I, I mean, the R3, so it's currently zoned R3, so, so that building being built, that, that's what's, that's what the R3 zoning allows, so that was built by right, it's a, it's a single, single unit, but multi-story building that, that can be used, like, night, so R3 zoning does allow nightly rentals. But, yeah, that's probably one of the first newer buildings built on Pelican, and I don't know, since I've been here. But yeah, it meets the, the current zoning.
Yeah, I feel like we didn't get as many comments on, on this district in Pelican, mostly just cleanup and consolidating the trash, which the city's looking at installing trash compactors back there to hopefully alleviate some of that.
I think the gist of the concerns were that we're going to be affected by that, that those 129th and 131st people, that they got to drive through it to get to home, and there, you know, so probably a lot of them, you know, are snowbirds, so they might not have made the workshops, but...
Also some confusion from, related to the R2 zoning district, that, that we did not touch and doesn't relate to John's Pass, but there was some confusion related to that and nightly rentals, that I think some people thought it, the meeting was related to that when it, when it was, and so there, there was unfortunately some confusion about that.
What's the 20 to 25 front setbacks? It's either 20 or 25?
Oh, sorry. Took me a minute. So it's, it's really written right here, so single family duplex, triplex is 20 feet in the front, if you're building a multifamily hotel or a commercial, it's 25 feet. There was just some, like on the worksheet, it's a little bit too many, too many words to fit in there, so. Okay, so we're going to go to traditional village, C1 zoning, just like the commercial course, the setbacks in the front, none side is 10 feet on one side, rear is 25 feet, and then the height from design flood elevation is 34 feet. So just some examples, obviously it depends on like what type of roof you have, and so it could be two or three stories, and then possibly looking at like step backs for the second and above floors. And a lot of these buildings were built a while ago, and so we, we're having a hard time finding building plans, but we did find a building plan for this elevator shaft. So as you can see here, taking in consideration the current DFE, I can't even read that, was it 31, I think it's a little over 31 feet, so, and that's in front of like the Mad Beach So, maybe some buildings slightly taller than that, but about that, you know, about that height, maybe lower than that. So around 31, the current code is 34 feet, so going to the sheet. A lot of it was maintaining current code with the height. Now there is, there was one consideration of possibly making that higher if it's, the use is a garage, or if you have a certain threshold of, of land, but mostly it was, you know, if, if you're a garage, then possibly getting higher than that 34 feet.
Yeah, Robin at the next VOC workshop meeting, I guess we'll be giving an update about the proposed parking garage on, on the city-owned land down there, and that, that was the consideration for the additional height, was to relate to the parking structure. And the parking structure would have retail at grades that would match the surrounding area, because we want to make sure they still have that interactive, nice...
Pedestrian friendly and Main Street look.
Yeah.
So, some of the setbacks, a lot of them were to meet current code, but we do have that one on the side is like 10 feet on one side, so there was a lot of comments of, of getting rid of that, so it'd be zero on the front, zero on the sides. And then we have a variety of the rear setbacks. And then also looking at that step back for those higher stories, so you don't come up with one huge block, it's not what you want. And also doing the design guidelines, of course. I would say those are the main outcomes of the traditional village. And did anyone have any comments on that section? Okay. I know it's getting a little late, so. So transitional, this is on both sides of Gulf, so we see the R3 on the beach side, and then you have a mix of, there's one little sliver that's R2 back here, it's already developed, C4 and C3, which both of those zoning, C3 and C4 look very similar with their setbacks in height.
Jenny, if I may, where does parking requirements come to play?
So parking requirements is in a separate section than this. So there are, and that's something that we talked to Kim Lee Horn about, possibly looking when they're doing the master plan, is looking at parking, especially in John's Pass Village, and seeing what works, what works in more Main Street, traditional areas. So they'll definitely be looking at our parking standards.
Okay, thank you.
Now, in John's Pass Village, just the village area, there is, in our code, we do have a reduction in parking requirement, where it's half of what it is compared to the rest of the city. Outside of the, the village though, on, on the beach side, and it requires a full amount of parking, we require everywhere else in the city. So that, that's what currently is in our code.
Thank you, Andrew.
And then here's some examples of the C3 and C4 zoning, all of this is built out, and we have Madeira Bay on, on these, really on this side.
For the most part, people just want to keep it like the same as like the current R3, which is fine. The only older building there with, that's, that's taller than that, was this timeshare building that was built in the 80s that, that meets that 60 feet from grade. Everything else was either done like Madeira Bay with a variance or with a PD, like with Barefoot Beach Club, and this area is a very sensitive area, because there is a mix of some single-family residential. And in general, that's kind of the challenge on the beach side, that is a mix of like, you have everything from single-family residential to condos and some hotel uses mixed in, so, but for the most part, like, there was agreement to keep it at that 44 feet from DFE and not, not allow for the heights that...
Barefoot Beach, those PDs and variances.
Yeah.
Those would kind of be exceptions and not to go up to that height. So Barefoot Beach is 63 feet, 7 inches.
Yeah, because, because all their, John's Pass Resort had, had the, most of the taller buildings that were built to zoning requirements pre-1983, so that, it'd make more sense to allow for additional height there, because there already are buildings that were built by right back in the day to those height standards well. In this area, outside of this one building, that's the timeshare building, the other ones were done as, basically as exceptions or rezoning.
So a lot of it was just maintaining current code. You can go to that page, but, so that was the outcome. Intensity transition, that was the majority of it, was just maintaining the current code. So that was the outcome of those three meetings, I think they went really well, having those round tables, so we'll definitely do that in the future with more, with our future workshops and when we go through the master plan process, really doing those round tables. I think it got everybody talking and discussing what setbacks really are, what height really is, what's important in each district. I think we had a great outcome and we're very pleased with all the information that we got from, from that.
Good job.
And was there anything else that anybody would like to add to this? And hopefully we'll be able to get you a draft.
The only thoughts or concern I have is, when it comes to height, and you measure to the peak of the roof, when it comes to hip roof, that's a good thing. However, I think developers may say, "Well, let's do flat roofs," and so you can get extra height. And I think we would be encouraging to build more flat roofs than hip roofs. I don't know if there's any way we could mitigate for that.
Yeah, there's, there's, I think it's R1 and R2, some more of our residential, we measure from the eve, and then there's certain pitch, and then also a height limitation at the very tippy top of that roof. So that's kind of what we're exploring, so we don't get all these boxes and flat roofs.
Yeah, one, one idea, how I kind of see it is almost like a layer cake, where you have the one floor parking at grade, you have the, like, four, the five stories of livable floors, and that's where the livable floors are, and then above the eve line is whatever roof architectural stuff that isn't livable space. So you have this kind of layer cake to keep everything nice and kind of compact and not allow, because the problem is when you don't have specific language, like if you look at Barefoot Beach Club's Development Agreement, it says five stories over one floor parking, but the, but the rooftop is air-conditioned, so technically it really is six stories over parking, but they kept it vague enough because of, but even though the, the rooftop has an air-conditioned space, which we would treat as another story. But it's important to have specific language in there to kind of keep things contained, so if you only want those five floors of livable over one floor parking, you really need to be specific to what, and then what can be above it to just being the architectural stuff, because, because you guys don't want the flat roof stuff happening. But you also don't want like sneaking like rooftop stuff up there that, that exceeds that height, so it's important to be very specific in the language.
Okay, so is there any more conversations or questions about this John's Pass Village? Okay, so next item is, shows old business, but is there any new business to be discussed at this point? No, if not, staff presentation?
No, this is, that's all we have. It's enough presentation.
Okay, the next meeting is June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd at 6 o'clock. We are joined at 8:03.